All right, it's six P M. I'll call this regular select board meeting at the time of the clock to the order. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first we'll revisit this to review and approve the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, review and approve the November twenty-seventh regular select board minutes, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then a meeting, a motion to approve the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three special select board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any good news to share?
Town Board did a good job kind of in a sea storm as big as we thought, but my street was great.
Boys basketball team won the Bob A tournament. That was good.
You looked great.
Yeah, nice.
And Mr. A is still around. That's nice.
He hasn't changed a bit.
Nope.
Anything else for good stuff? Okay, open public comment.
Bruce?
Ben.
I don't want the town manager to answer my question. I want the board to answer. I want to know why, I've been working down here at the Falls for the last week, and I'd like to know why their sewer plant gate is open with nobody there.
Okay, that'd be a question for the town manager, John.
Well, who has control of the highway department?
The town manager. I have the town manager to supervise the day-to-day operations of the town.
So the question is, why is that gate open with nobody there?
So are you asking me?
If I get a two yes, so you have.
So usually the guys go in and out of there, so they leave it open all the time at night. But if they're going in there during the day, especially with the weather like this and they're in there walking sand and stuff, then they're down there. And the guys are going back and forth, even on weekends, they rotate, and they go down there all the time to do testing.
Shouldn't that be locked constantly when nobody's there because of the lagoons? I mean, when I was on the board, I noticed that was a big issue with insurance company because there's an issue of kids walking down through there if nobody's there.
No, I mean, it's locked for the majority of the time, but when they're in and out of there, it's probably unlocked.
Well, the weekend I was down there at the children's hall, it was never locked. And I go right in there, and there was nobody there. And that was on a Wednesday.
What time, John?
Was that?
What time?
I think it was around ten thirty.
Okay, we can look into that.
I'm concerned because, you know, you know how kids are today, they could walk in there if nobody's there.
We can look into that, John. Thank you.
John, are you doing the excavating in the river?
No comment. I'm just concerned on things what's happening with Tom. I mean, we're spending eighty-two thousand dollars on the town manager. West Street over here by the castle, it seems that they started the project and that came to them in. East Street with Aldebaran going down the hill, I mean, that guy cleaned it up. I mean, the cars there, trucks, I mean, the cars, a truck there, and the bulbs laying out there, and nothing's picked up. And I noticed over on West Street going out, the grass on one house is this high, it seems like we're going backwards, we're not going forward.
Which house on West Street, John? I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Just beyond the store going down the hill.
On the left side or the right side if you're going out of town?
If you're going down into Center on, it would be on the left-hand side.
Okay.
I mean, that's been vacant, and the grass is high. I mean, you guys sit there and you want to make Proctor look presented or anything, and yet you just drive around here and you can see all this stuff. It's shocking. We're not going forward, we're going backwards. I really am. And also, I put up great states on my lawn, all right? The snowstorm, they knocked them down again. The last snowstorm, they knocked them down again. What did I gotta do? But bold is up there. I mean, last year I fixed my lawn, all right? That cost me three hundred bucks.
Well, I mean, that's.
Can't they see this? Are they blind or what? And plus, I'm against having that wing on that truck. There's no need to have that wing when you only got two minutes of snow. There's no need to. I've called for fifty years. The only time you need a wing is when you've got snow banks and you can't push a stone over.
Anything else, John?
No, I'm just concerned.
I've written down everything you said. We can look into it. I'm just asking if you have any.
And also, the answers that she gave me on that sheet that I sent to the board, it was just to the board, not to the town manager, because I gave her all the state attorney. And he, she was concerned that the board didn't answer. Only one member of the board answered.
John, everybody reviewed that letter, everybody signed off on it. We were aware was what was in with it.
Did you, everybody read Tom Hogan's letter? Did everybody read Tom Hogan's letter?
No.
No.
No, I don't, no.
No, I read your.
Okay, here's my answer.
What?
Because he did send me.
My letter was to you, John.
Yes. And since he's a scoreboard member, I think the rest of us should have read it too. These are the concerns I bring it up. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, are you the one excavating in the river down there?
It's all legal, it's all fine.
Okay. We'll check.
Okay, is there any other open public comment? We're not. Has everybody had a chance to review the bills and sign the select board orders?
No.
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 Oh, take this right through.
Always talk to the media.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time. Chamber of Economic Development of the Rutland Region, two thousand twenty-four, Cedar.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Judy's at a different spot in the table, which is great to see. So you give us a few minutes every year, and we appreciate that, to just talk a little bit about our regional marketing initiative and what we're doing and why we're doing that. You have been supporters of this program since the very beginning, and we're now going into eight, year eight of what we consider to be a ten-year program. And you're going to say, well, when you come back to us in year ten, what are you going to say? We're probably going to then turn it into a twenty-year program, because you never really stop marketing. And if you look at any successful company, you just have to keep marketing your product. We've got a great product to market, which is Rutland County. And when you drive into Proctor, the lights are on everywhere for the holiday season right now. You'll probably see that, and you know that if you drive around town. This is the quintessential, and it really is a bedroom community. And I think that may be the way you like it, because it's very calm out here, very peaceful out here, and you can raise your families here. That's a great thing. And frankly, I wouldn't change that. So we, I'm with Olivia Lyons, who is our marketing communications manager, or communications and marketing manager, I get that wrong every time. And she has put together this packet for you. And we want to just very quickly, we know you have other things on your agenda, and you know why we're here, which is each year you've provided us with sixteen hundred and forty dollars, I think is the actual amount, which was about the number of people in town. And our goal, if anybody else wants to, we have some. I'd like to show you some statistics. And our goal at the end of the day is that our businesses within Rutland County continue to have a hard time finding staff and employees that have the qualifications that they need to move the economy forward. Our job is to get Rutland County out in front of people around the United States so that they can see that we have high-paying jobs here and jobs that they can live on here. Your first question to us should be, where are they going to live? Okay, because we all have the issue around housing. That, the market is beginning to change that a little bit, and we're hoping that that will improve over time. But we need people who can come in and can afford to build houses and to renovate houses. If you look at Rutland City alone, there are several hundred units that are not being lived in right now, but they need renovations. And we need people who can come in and can work on some of those. So what we're doing is we're staying in front of people. We're hoping to stay in front of very specific people, quite frankly, that can come here and fill jobs that are open, and will have the requirements of the positions that, when they come here. So Olivia's put together some statistics, and she can talk to you a little bit about what's happened over the last three years, where people are going, and the types of jobs that they're coming to.
So if you want to take a look at this paper, I believe it's on the left-hand side, it's Real Rutland Concierge Program Fact Sheet. I'm going to read it all to you, but just so you know, lead is someone who reaches out to us and says, hey, I'm interested. Tell me more about Rutland County. So twenty twenty-one, we had six hundred sixty-four. Twenty twenty-two, there was a little bit of a dip, five hundred sixty-two. But so far for twenty twenty-three, we've had almost fifteen hundred people interested. We've done two weekend getaways, where we invited families to come and really experience Rutland County with an eye towards relocating here. And with more of the money, thank you, that we have collected from our towns and from businesses, we've been able to put more into marketing and really get people here for those weekends, and also just in general. People who have actually moved to the area, twenty twenty-one, we had eighty-six. A lot of those people were fleeing. It was still COVID time. Twenty twenty-two, we had forty-seven people. It was expensive. There weren't as many homes on the market. But twenty twenty-three, so far, we've had fifty-seven people move. There are four more in the process of moving before the end of the year. And we have six people set to move in twenty twenty-four that we know of so far. So our numbers are coming back up. And we do have some people moving to Proctor. There was one very recently, he just closed on the house last month, and we met with him. We have a lot of families that come and visit the area. We tell them, definitely drive through Proctor. It's gorgeous. A marvel there. If you've ever been to Washington, D.C., came from there. And we also recently put Wilson Castle out. That was our place for families to go during the weekend getaway for the scavenger hunt. And we put Wilson Castle out on social media, which goes all across the U.S. And people were super excited to see that. I think Vermont, which is the state tourism department, they also put out something on Wilson Castle. We work very closely with them. And again, it was received very well for people all over. So.
Do you have to explain the weekend that we got a scavenger hunt?
The scavenger hunt is a way to get people out throughout the entire county. So we asked them to go to all twenty-six towns in one city and really explore and kind of think, where can you see yourself? Do you want to be really close to a city? Do you want to be more on the outskirts? Are you thinking of being more towards Addison County, down towards Bennington County, and really try to get a feel for where is your vibe? Where do you see yourself living?
We asked them to take a picture so that we can say, yes, you were there. And then if they take enough pictures, they get a prize at the end. So compare.
Yes.
So you can see on the back there where people are moving, some of the towns people are moving to, the types of jobs that they're looking at. And you can see at the bottom our sponsors. In large part, businesses are putting into this because they recognize that this is actually getting people to come here. Our Real Rutland website has the businesses on sliders, so that Cassella will go through, and Killington will go through, and Greenmount Power will go through. If people click on those, it'll bring them right to a directory of jobs that are open at those businesses. Behind that piece, you're going to see the life you were meant for. This is something that we can customize. So if you had a business that wanted to go into Fifty-two Main over here, and they wanted to know, well, what's the traffic count? How many people live in a certain place? What are their, what's to do around the county? We can customize this. This one, the one you're looking at right now was for a business that was looking at the dining room mall. We also added to this traffic counts, some information on market bleed, so that the business that was looking at that knew that there were reasons why people were going to Burrow and the Glens Falls to go shopping, because we didn't have building businesses there. And there's actually information that shows you how much bleed is leaving the county, because there are not certain businesses where people are going to purchase that. So we can include specific information for businesses in the background. Also, you'll see on the right-hand side, we have opened the Hub Co-Works, which is a twenty-two thousand square foot co-working facility that has a business incubator built into that. We're calling that Startup Rutland. And that is for Startup Rutland County, not just Rutland City. And it's a twenty-two thousand square foot co-working facility. We all remember it being called the Opera House. And so if you go down, go into the Opera House today, total renovation, it's beautiful. We have classrooms there that have all, well, stuff like you've got here, a couple of TVs bigger than that, actually, so people can zoom in and do presentations at the same time. Our corporate businesses are using those for training facilities. You'll see behind that, the, how we're spending our money with regional marketing, how we're spending your money on regional marketing. You'll see what we have sent along to Judy to put into your annual report, and then you will see our annual report. One of the things we're particularly proud of is the fact that the mintmaker space has grown, and that now is about twenty thousand square feet. And they have partnered with Rutland Area Robotics. And so what we are focusing on is workforce development with younger people. And we're hoping that those younger people will stay here because they're excited about what they're able to do right here. We fully expect that some of those robotics kids are going to go off to RIT and other places, but if they create relationships here, we want them to come back and work for the GEs of the world. So a lot going on. Our role at the end of the day, if you go through this little blue booklet, you're going to see, well, you do mixers, and you do whoopie pie festivals. You've got eight different committees. What are they all about? Each one of them is trying to attract people to come here. Each one of them is helping to create infrastructure so that people want to be here and stay here. And one of the things that your funds help with through the regional marketing initiative is that we throw parties. And we invite people who have been here over the last, have moved here over the last two years. And what we find is, if people haven't found their social group, if they haven't found a connection, they leave. And so we're working on retention. Not only does Olivia know what cities in the United States to pinpoint her social marketing, because it's successful, but we then, once we get them there, we've got to keep them here. And so we're going to be doing something, we hope, at the indoor golf place, just to bring people together so that they can create relationships. So we need to reach out to GE and the hospital and other businesses, and we'd say, who has been here only a couple of years? We want to invite them to a party. And then they come, and we talk to them, and hopefully they stay here. Thousand more words than you wanted to hear.
How many?
The same words if you rewind the tape.
Do you have a number? How many people use the hub?
The hub, how many? Oh, I have to get that information for you, yeah. We're actually finding, it's interesting, we thought that the co-working place would be where people would go, that they have their computers, and they go in there, and they would work quietly and silently. We're finding that the other side of the hub is actually busier, where we have classroom space, where businesses want to come in, where we've got the big-screen TVs, and people are zooming in and out. So we may be changing up how we use some of our space. And we found, interestingly enough, that offices are where people want to be and not necessarily out in an open space. So we may change some of our open space into smaller offices that you can actually see into, because people want to know other people that are there. They just don't want to be too close to them.
Right. Because I was just looking at like a private desk, it's like one ninety-nine a month. So if somebody had a business of their own, and they just wanted a private space to work at, it's only a hundred ninety-nine dollars a month.
Yep. In a more open space. It's not an actual close-the-door.
Right, right, yeah.
Yep. But it would be their spot, and everybody will choose that spot. And there's a whole culture that goes along with this. I mean, people could walk up and sit near your desk, but they don't. And we have staff there, and your name's on it. So our request, as you know, is for sixteen hundred and forty dollars, if you would allow that to be built within your budget, we would appreciate that very much. There are other towns in Rutland City that are contributing to this, and our businesses are contributing, and we sparingly use every dollar, even on parties, which we think is sparingly, but it works.
Any questions? No.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
You've been with us. This would be eight years now, if you are so loving. So thank you.
Thank you.
Generally, I connect with Judy afterwards, and she said, yeah, okay, or no.
They'll let me know.
I know you're going through budget right now, so that's.
Here we are.
There's a lot going on there. A lot of moving parts, and a lot of people with their hands out, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And will we be offending you if we leave?
No.
Thank you.
Next up, our good friends from the Otter Creek Watershed, second control district.
Now, as almost everybody here knows me already, Doug Perkins, I'm the outgoing chair of the board trustees. And what I'm going to do this evening is quickly review the year that just was. And then I'll turn it over to Jeff Schuman, who is the incoming chair of the district, and he'll talk about the year that's coming up, and some things that we foresee changing, and we want to talk to you about. So first off, Judy should already have the electronic form of the report that I'm going to summarize. And you should have gotten just this last week, your assessment for this next year, in an email from Lynn Peck.
I just got the figures, yeah.
Okay, good. And it's not sixteen hundred and forty dollars, just so we're clear. It's a little bit more than that. So what we're highlighting to all of the other towns when we visit their select board is, hooray, Proctor joined us this year as the sixth member town. So thank you again for the support that you provided at town meeting last year, and that the citizenry understood that it was a better deal for you to join as a full member than to stay on a contract basis. This last year, it rained. It rained some more. And then we had a big flood in July, and then it rained some more after that. And the consequence of that was that it was ideal breeding conditions for mosquitoes. And because of all of the evening rainstorms we had, we couldn't get out there many times when we wanted to, to do the spraying that would keep those under control. So we did not do a particularly good job last year of keeping the nuisance level where we'd like to see. That said, we were able to spray nineteen times here in Proctor, which is probably just about as good as anybody got in a per capita basis. Granted, there were a few more spraying occasions with the larger town. So you did get treated, and that is because we tried to treat you on Mondays, and we got the rain on Fridays. So many times we got to you and then got washed out for the rest of the week. So that's the good news. The bad news is that the number of mosquitoes that we captured were way above what we consider normal. And that was true statewide as well. I looked at the overall state figures, and about double what the rest of the state has been capturing is what they saw. Consequently, to all the nuisance mosquitoes being out there, the number of service requests we received was over two hundred percent higher than what we normally get. So there were a lot of people asking for service that sometimes we could provide, but just an indication of how bad it was. So in November of two thousand twenty-two, the board approved a new assessment algorithm that goes into effect this year. Now, that was done somewhat with thinking that you might be members at this point, and we wanted to be sure that how we calculate each town's assessment was, in fact, an equitable way of doing it. Jeff was the head of that committee back then. That's going into effect for this year for all the other towns. And of course, your two thousand twenty-four assessment reflects that new algorithm and those calculations. And that's about all I wanted to say, other than Jeff is the new chair. Full disclosure, he's also the president of the Lake Dunmore Fern Lake Association. They decided to make me the vice chair, and I'm the secretary of the Lake Dunmore Fern Lake Association. There's no incest here, trust me. Lynn Peck is our new treasurer. She's from Lester, as am I. Jeff is from Salisbury. Steve Belcher from Pittsburgh remains our secretary. And this year, we've established a new position called auditor. Jeff Whiting from Goshen is going to fill that position. And we're going to take a real hard look this year at our internal financial controls, make sure that we have in place what we really should have in place, to make sure that our money is being spent proper. That's the year that was. Jeff?
Yeah, so just to pick up where Doug just left off with the auditor, the other thing is, we have a operations director and a couple of part-time people, and a couple of other part-time drivers. And so one of the things we'll also be looking at is how we utilize these five people to do the work we need to do in a more efficient way. We really haven't paid, no one's really taken a good, hard look at that. And I've been involved with the board maybe four and a half years now, and it just was kind of, it just ran itself, so to speak. So this is going to be a new foray for us, and we're probably going to ruffle a few feathers internally as we look at how we do business. But I think it's time. It's time for us to take a look at that and dial some things in. The other thing is, you know, historically, we have been cash poor throughout the year. And the way the district had always dealt with it was we had a line of credit at the bank, and every time we ran low, we went down the bank and borrowed it. And then when we got the money back, we paid it back with the interest. We're going to try something a little different. This new treasurer, Secretary Lynn, is up on this stuff, and she's going to be able to invoice the towns on a quarterly basis. And if we can get that to flow, then I think we'll be able to get through the year where the cash flow is going to work. So towns that are going to get involved in that, start their fiscal year, one July, their first payment is going to be due at the end of September. And then they'll pay right through. And then once we get it all in and flowing, we'll be getting dollars in throughout the year. We spend most of our money in June, July, and August. And a lot of towns don't pay us until they collect their taxes until the fall. And so there, we have to try to get from August to when those checks start coming in every year. And we've just been cash poor and unable to do it some years. Sometimes Brad will come in, our old treasurer, and say, we can't buy that stuff, we don't have any money right now. Let's wait a couple of weeks and see what happens. Or we'll get up and borrow the money. So we're going to try that. And the last piece that we're dealing with, and this is something that's going on with the Lake Association as well, is our operation to control bugs, and in the lake we control plants, is done with chemicals. And more and more, this is becoming scrutinized. We lost the use of one of our chemicals for killing mosquitoes this year, which took three of our trucks out of service immediately. We can only have one chemical now, and the risk of that is, if the bugs develop resistance to it, then we don't have anything that's going to work. And so we're fighting that fight as best we can. The science is, you know, it's not a hundred percent one way or the other. And there's folks who believe vehemently that what we're doing is not a good thing. And there's folks who swear by it. And so we're trying to follow the rules. We're trying to do the things we need to do. The state, the director up at the state comes from Florida. He comes from a place where he had a multimillion-dollar budget. And he wants us to buy this equipment for our trucks. Well, if we did what he wanted us to, we'd have to spend fifty thousand dollars tomorrow. We don't have fifty thousand. We don't have fifty thousand dollars. So we're having that conversation with him, and we're going back and forth, and we're trying to work our way through that. So that's going to be an ongoing challenge for us to work with Montpelier and the folks up there to keep us up and running. We know how good we do, we know when the trucks come by, when the quality of life gets better for a few days, and if we can hit three or four times in a row without getting washed out, we do okay, and we know that, and we want to keep that, but it's going to be a challenge, and you three guys who are working with us, we're going to hear about that all next year as we battle through the red tape up in Montpelier. But having said all that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to field them.
Who makes the determination of what chemical you use? The state?
The state, well, we have a permitting process, and in the permitting process, we can tell them, the state, what chemicals we'd like to use and we plan to use, and the permit gets approved, then that's fine. But if the state says, you know, they're not going to approve that particular chemical, then yes, it is ended.
Yeah, so we asked to use malathion last year. Historically, we've intermixed that with a permethrin, just because we don't want resistance to build up. But malathion is an organophosphate, and there's a lot of people that think organic phosphates are evil, and consequently, the Department of Health, not the Department of Agriculture, but the Department of Health said, no, you may not approve a permit for Otter Creek that has used the malathion in it. So we will ask again this year in the permitting process that we're meeting on Friday to talk about, to use the both chemicals again. I won't be surprised when they once again tell us no, but we're trying to make the point. This is what happened with DDT. DDT went out of business, not necessarily because of Rachel Carson and Silent Spring, it's because that was all they were using for many years, and all of a sudden, it stopped working because the mosquitoes became resistant to it. And if we run into that situation again, there is really no fallback chemical that anybody's willing to approve these days, other than the permethrons, and if they become ineffective, we are screwed. So that's a technical term.
And the malathion is also less expensive, is that?
It is, that's not the key issue.
No.
The key issue is that we really like to mix it up so that the mosquitoes cannot build resistance. Now, we have that resistance testing every year. There's a laboratory that has, here too for the last many years, it's been Cornell University, their entomology lab that does the testing, that is transitioning at some point here in the future to...
Yeah, I knew you were asking that.
Is it Princeton?
Yeah, I think you might, it was David from Princeton, I don't remember.
The, I want to say the DEA, it's not the DEA. The EPA put it out for bid, and Cornell didn't have a little bid, so they lost the work of doing all of this testing.
Or is it UMass?
Amherst.
Amherst.
UMass, Amherst, yeah, you're right. So eventually, they'll be doing the testing, but whatever, there's a whole program set up, we just send eggs off to the lab, they hatch the eggs and grow the mosquitoes, and then when they have the adults of the right species, and a bunch of them, then they expose them to the chemicals and see how quickly they die off, to see if, in fact, they're resistant, so.
Interesting.
That's that. Any other questions?
Question, can I, how many years have you been doing Proctor?
Proctor was on contract for four years before, for now, so for the last four years, and then now that they're a full member going forward, this next year will be their first year as a full member. So to answer your question, four years.
So this could keep going on and on and on, are you really controlling them, or are you just, do you just keep going on and on?
What we're trying to do is control the nuisance level, keep the nuisance level to a tolerable level. You're never going to exterminate all the mosquitoes, that's impossible, but our program of larva siding, to try to catch them before they become adults, and then adulticideing, the spraying that we do, is intended to keep the nuisance down to where people can enjoy the out-of-doors in the evening during the summer, and it's fairly effective, as I'm sure the citizenry here will tell you, if we can get at it on a weekly basis. Anything else? Any other questions?
I know it would have been a tough summer, I think, if your people weren't here.
Oh, well, up in Lester, where I live, where they tried to spray on Friday nights, and it rained every Friday night, it was miserable for much of the summer, yeah, just awful.
Yeah, the lakes only got sprayed four or five times, I think.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we would be able to be outside.
Losing battle with all the rain, just was...
It's not, the rain breezes, okay, fine, but if we can get out there and spray, we can knock them down, and keep the nuisance to a tolerable level, which is what we're having.
I just remember the couple of summers before we started contracting, and you couldn't go outside, you just couldn't, it was awful.
There's a lot of complaints.
Oh. Yeah. And it's not sixteen hundred and forty dollars, but it isn't that expensive either to have a fairly good program in place.
I agree.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any questions at all, at any time, call Jeff.
Aptism by fire.
Thank you. We'll see you Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah, right here?
Yep.
Okay, great.
All right, letters to Department of Taxes and State Representative on reappraisal restructuring.
I have them in there to sign, those are a few.
So I think Judy shared with us last week some concerns about how the reappraisal is happening, and our lister has asked us to put some letters together for the commissioner of the Department of Taxes and for our representative to just put our two cents in about how we think the reappraisal should go, so is everybody comfortable approving that and signing it and sending it off?
No, I think anything we can do to slow this down and bring some common sense to it, it sounds all that the state is just pushing this, and...
You want all the control?
I think, you know...
And keep local control if we can.
Yes, we have to, yeah, that's the whole key. The system seems to be working in town for, you know, years, and hate to see the state getting into it.
So if everybody's comfortable with that, I'll sign these and send them down, and we can send them out.
Thank you.
All right, South Street Sidewalk Project.
So this is just kind of what's coming up next. The bids are going out probably March twenty-fourth for the contractors, so they're kind of looking at choosing a construction inspection engineer, and when they speak to the ATR, that's basically at the ready. So when you're choosing somebody for any design work or any engineering work, the at-ready is somebody, it's a group of engineers that already have been kind of pre-approved, that they actually have the criteria and the licensing and the certifications necessary, rather than going out for an RFP to get all the detailed information, and then kind of coming down with, okay, here's our top three based on what they've sent us. You can go to this group and pick your top three from this group, knowing that they meet the basic criteria, so it kind of speeds up the process and takes a lot of legwork off of everybody, so. So that's part of the process there, too, and then choosing a review committee to do that. So if we went through that group and we had a committee ready to kind of review those, kind of have that in place prior to then, too.
So is there action that we need to take on this, or...
You may want to either now or soon consider who that committee would be, or if anybody, you know, I would suggest not making the committee too big, just because it kind of makes it harder to, you know, maybe, I don't know, it's like if myself and two of you wanted to be on it.
Is anybody interested in serving on the at-the-ready committee? For our South Street sidewalks, which will be this summer, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Tom and Bruce? So Tom, Bruce, and Judy, is everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
Judy, is there any way this could go up the bid sooner, by March? Most contractors have, there's some who work out and be locked in.
Right, originally, I thought they had wanted to go earlier, but she said, I'm hoping it's by March twenty-twenty-four, so at least in February. I think it's quicker if we do the at-ready, because then we have a list already, we're not, you know, mailing our FPs, advertising for it and stuff like that. So I can push to see if we can see that at-ready group and list.
That's late for summer construction.
Yeah, that's a timeframe they put into place.
Okay.
And the trees, I've checked with them about coming down to the trees, and again, he just has trouble getting help, so he's thinking probably...
Do we want to look somewhere else?
We already offered them the bid.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if they can't meet, you know, a decent price...
Right, but they're the only ones that did bid, so we don't have a fallback.
I'm afraid that's what's going to happen with the sidewalk.
Right, yeah, no, he's got to guarantee that he gets it down this winter, so he's got to find, I mean, I'll hire the guy who took the other two down on the property, because that guy did it quick, but I'll keep at him just to make sure, so.
And could you check and see if there's any way we could, you know, get the bids out sooner?
Okay.
Even if we get them out in January?
Well, we're not going out for bid.
Right.
We're not going out for bid, so that takes time, that takes a good month's process out of the place, out of the picture, if we do at the ready, if that's what you guys want to do.
Yeah, I'm sure there's enough stuff that we comply with the state, that they've got this timetable in mind, and...
Right.
But it is late, there's no doubt about it, but I don't think we can hurry the process along.
We'll be lucky to see construction this summer, in my opinion.
Yeah.
It's such a late...
Okay, sooner we get it started, the better. Planning Commission.
Okay, just wanted to give you guys updates. We had a planning commission meeting last week.
And you are still short one member, anyone?
Yes. We are. Some of the things they brought up were the Twenty-One North Street, about the permits with the storage containers. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but they're all gone. So that property is for sale, not where the storage containers were, but across the street, that whole property is for sale, so it's been listed, and hopefully someone will purchase it, so. Talked about the tri-town trails, and I kind of explained that that was kind of being directed by the planning commission, and having the three managers tasked with it at first, and that informational meetings will be coming up for the towns. We went back to the designer that we chose, which was Stantik, and we had some concerns because they were over budget, and we want to keep them within the budget, so we went back to see if certain meetings could be altered, if we could combine meetings for the three towns, and also if all the members that they said would participate in those meetings had to be there, because they had like four to five people attending. So they were very agreeable, so we haven't gone back to the table with the three towns, but I think we'll get to that point where it'll be under budget, so that's one of the good things. Zion is still on hold, waiting for information, but I have reached out to see what is happening because the deadline is quickly coming up, I think it's this coming week, so. And there wasn't anything done with the Airbnbs at the meeting, they hadn't done any research on it yet, so hopefully they'll do some more legwork on that, and everyone's kind of looking to compile information on short-term rentals to bring to the table. So I think from my, being in the meetings, I think it might be a wise thing for the select board to actually task the planning commission with things to do, because I feel like it kind of flounders out there, and like so many things are happening, but nothing's really got, you know, feet on the ground. So I think if the select board came up with a couple ideas that what they'd really like to see, and tasked them with that, like the town with the short-term rentals and stuff, you know, looking into that, creating something, but if there's any other projects or development that they'd like to see them try to go after, I think it just might be, you know, an advantage for them that way.
Always helps to have a goal.
Huh?
Said it always helps to have a goal.
Yeah, well, just, I think, too, to support, you know, kind of have a direction, just so they kind of feel like they're accomplishing.
Anything else for Planning Commission?
I don't believe so.
One on nine, dear Lane.
So I included everything in your packet, because this was brought to my attention about having the water turned back on, so I included the letter where it was asked to be shut off, I included the minutes where it was approved to have them forgiven for those water charges, and then the fact that what was said was going to be done with the water being turned off actually was.
So now they want it turned back on?
And the reasoning behind it is, I believe they want to sell the property, and they said that whoever buys it would want water going to the building. So when I questioned and said, you have a well, that's why you wanted the water shut off, they said the well goes to the other property, the farm property, and we're not going to let them use the well if we sell the property.
Oh, well.
So it's just the little house behind TNT there?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
There's a procedure for turning it back on, isn't there, connecting it, there's like a fee in, I'm pretty sure.
Well, there should be, plus it's also been questioned why they're on our water, why the whole property is on our water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been through this for a period.
Yeah.
Well, there are many properties, if the main cross your property plant was put in, you had the option to...
Right, right, but if they're saying there's a well, so they want this shut off, but the well serves the farm property, then why aren't they using the well for the farm property rather than being on town water, is my question.
Because we aren't.
And we forgave them all that.
We don't have a water meter, that's fine.
But we also forgave them for all the water that they should have been charged for.
Is it the house that wants the water turned on, or the farm property?
No, the house.
The owners.
Yeah.
They're claiming the pipe is broke, and that it was the town's fault, because they never shut off the pipe, but the pipe was shut off there, and it was also shut off at the main and at the road.
So we're going to have to do all this repair work?
I don't believe so, it's not a priority for us.
No, but I mean, if we're going to give them water, we would have to repair it.
No, because I think the, I think the pipe is broken on their, I don't know if it's on their property, I don't know if it's on our end or not. It could be further enough into their property, so it's not on our, right away.
We don't know.
According to the water ordinance for any hookup, the homeowner is responsible...
The main is, the only thing you have to worry about is the main, you come out the main, the rest of it, he owns.
That's not true, if we own up to the shut-off.
Shut-off.
The curse.
When I was on the boat, he wanted it off, that would agree with them, with Stan Wilbur, we only own the main, and he owned the rest of it. You're going to go back and look at that.
Albert has a question.
The ordinance says that when it's a new hookup, the homeowner is responsible, and they have to comply with the state regulations, they have to connect to the main, the corporation. Once it is... Once it is installed, inspected, and allowed to be used, then the town takes the responsibility from the main to the curb stop, and then the homeowner will take from the curb stop to their seller.
Right.
But we went through legal rules to disconnect all outer district customers, so I don't think your ordinance means anything, because this is an outer district customer, this is not someone that's a property owner and proctor, so I would suggest contacting your attorney, because we spent a lot of money on disconnecting all those people, I'm sure Bruce remembers that, and we paid people money to disconnect.
And this one, this particular one went on for years.
And then how are you gonna justify when the next people wanna come and be reconnected to town water?
Yeah.
Is, is the main even in use down there?
Not for that.
What, the main? Yes, it goes all the way to the.
Yeah, but it's not used to, to that, to the house we're talking about.
And then it crosses the road, and the disconnect is on the property going south, uh, going north on the right-hand side.
Okay. Now, I make a motion we not reconnect it?
I don't think we're obligated to, and it is out of town.
Right.
Yeah.
Their complaint is that it was never shut off when it should have been, and therefore the pipe ruptured, and so it needs to be repaired and hooked up before it can actually be turned on again, and this is for the little house.
Why should we?
So, I mean, and John in August said the water line is disconnected and capped to the basement, have pictures, also the curb stop at the road is shut off.
Yeah.
I verified that back in two thousand nineteen with turning on the old TNT building for carpenter and customer.
Unfortunately, the conversations had with what happened, what's gonna happen, were with people who don't, aren't here anymore. So it's kind of, you know, and, and I'm sure the pipe is on their property, and it's been capped off inside the house as well.
Yeah.
There's a motion on the floor?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So the motion is to not reconnect. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to recess the regular select board meeting and move to the border, body, Board of Water Commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, VLCT visit twelve-six to review Reynolds Reservoir.
Okay, yeah, so the day that they came down, he only checked the two, um, he checked the pond and the pool, he never checked the reservoir, he didn't realize that you couldn't drive all the way up there, so he waited until this past week and, um, and then came back down. So we haven't gotten a report from him, but I spoke with him, um, he has to send it to the league, they have to examine it, the underwriters, but he said he didn't really see a problem with it, he didn't think they were in poor condition. He said, yeah, there's issues, you know, things down the road and stuff, but he said, I don't see them as being a problem, he said they, you know, he said, you're talking about it small, you know, damn, this big, this deep, you know, and stuff, so he seemed very positive, so I'm hoping the underwriters lean the same way, so I should know by this week what's.
That, was it Wade that came down?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good news.
He's been up there before.
Yeah, yeah.
Since, um, if it goes the other way, what are we gonna do?
I think the only alternative is reach out, if they are not satisfied with their own risk manager, I would think we'd have to reach out to the state to say, you know, what are your findings and why, you know, and maybe even have a meeting with them as well as Wade. I mean Wade, they represent us, they're our insurance company, if they, if they have Wade working for them to determine if our properties are safe or not, and he says, yeah, they are, I would hope they'd go lean towards.
Especially cause they're gonna have to pay the bill if something happens, so.
Exactly. They're not gonna wanna do that.
Right. Anything else?
I mean, they, they've had him on the property schedule all this time, since the state, so it's like, why all of a sudden pull it off?
Yeah, that was years ago that we got that report about those dams.
Well, I think these floods, or these summer floods are scaring them. Who, you know, we can't let this go on and on, but no insurance is all I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we get good news, and we'll be able to move forward.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Anything else for Board of Water Commissioners?
I don't think so.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners and convene the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, A and E, excuse me, A and E preliminary report.
So I know I mentioned this last time, Aldrich and Elliot sent us their preliminary report, and he's working on doing the final report, um, he hasn't sent me the electronic copy yet, but when he does, I'm gonna circulate it to all of you, it's pretty lengthy, and it's very, very detailed, um, but it does give you a good overview of, you know, the ideas, the plans, the project, the cost, um, so it just gives you guys something to plan for in the future, cause it is, it's up there.
Yeah, gotta do it.
They, they haven't steered us wrong yet, and I'm sure that everything is.
Yeah.
Down to the. Very thorough.
Penny.
Oh, yeah.
Wayne is.
Well, he started going through it with me, and I, I was like, it's like you're gonna through every page, but he was, it was great, so.
Yeah.
It was very informative.
He's a great, great guy.
Anything else for sewer commissioners?
I don't.
One item. Were we supposed to have by the end of the month, a chief operator down there?
Yes.
Are we gonna have one?
Yes, we will.
We will, okay.
Yeah. That's in the works.
Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners and reconvene the regular select board meeting?
Omo.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Department reports, Sheriff. I gotta say, it's easier to read.
See anything there that really stood out?
Kind of a calm report compared to some.
Yep. Anything else for Sheriff's Report, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, just, uh, just a state trooper, uh, running, right, or anybody, you know, I'm glad to see him, certainly, but.
Someone mentioned that he lives here, so he likes to stay close to home, I don't know if that's the case.
You get a cop to the next door, nothing ever happens.
Yep. Town Manager's Report.
All right, so some of this I probably mentioned throughout the meeting already, um, about the bids, and that's twenty-four, not twenty-three, um, let's see, um, sent in a supplemental grant application to cover additional costs for the, um, South Street project as well, awards come in late February or March, so fingers crossed on that. We received the new plow, um, some complaints we received about sidewalk plow hitting property lines, and I think a lot of it is, the sidewalks are so narrow, and the ground wasn't yet frozen, we'd get snow, and the ground wasn't frozen, so when they were plowing, it, it kind of scraped along the side, so, and then I know one property has a high curb, so there's nowhere for the tractor to go once it's on the sidewalk, but, but to the right, so it's been brought to their attention, and hopefully they can try to rectify it, but it's kind of tough.
Yeah.
The answer checked, I already talked about that, and, uh, filed a request for reimbursement for the asset management plan on the water infrastructure, funds expense so far just over ten thousand, so I submitted those, um, the fire station, the blower in the fire station broke, um, so we called Lozen to repair, as they are the ones who installed the blower, um, Vinnie City was, it was the bearings, so parts had to be ordered, but it was fixed temporarily. I made some budget changes and updates, and then the, um, TAP planning study meeting on November twenty-ninth, there were a couple questions with regards to those assigned to the project that were not listed in the proposal, and therefore had no resumes, and I think I could have even mentioned this last meeting, but that was part of what I talked about when they went back to the, um, engineers to kind of get that information, so that they could verify that the people they felt were qualified and legit as part of the process, and they did, they sent all the resumes along, so, and they were definitely okay. I met with Bob Ferguson from NHC for phone changeover, he went through every phone line we had to, um, upgrade us, um, and it looks like he can do it at a much more costly basis. Our phones are so bad, cause we don't have caller ID, we have nothing here, um, the phones are just terrible, and they're very old, and he can do each line much cheaper, so he's gonna be coming out to meet with the library and with the, um, DPW, cause he wants to go actually on site to see all the phone lines, to see how he can set that up and attach it, cause some are, um, like DSL, so he didn't wanna have to switch over, and, you know, you, you have to have that in order to have a phone line and stuff, so, um, but I think it could make, bring in good cost savings for the phones, cause that, we pay quite a bit right now.
That's great.
Uh, let's see, Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee is meeting Wednesday at five-thirty, which I can't attend, I feel like I have four other meetings that day, um, so I'm checking to see if Kevin's gonna go or not, and then I have a, have a pass-up board meeting also on Wednesday.
Any questions for the Manager's Report? On the budget. Review number two.
So it's pretty much where it was last time, I may have made some alterations based on figures we got from the league and some other things, I tried to juggle certain numbers around, um, looking at last year, it's, it's like a lot of the IT stuff was dumped under, like, the clerk's office, and actually a portion goes to the manager, a portion goes to the clerk's office, a portion goes to the lister, so I separated it into those different departments, um, just because when you get a bill, it's easier to just kind of code it that way. So we're still, I believe, at the same percentage at the end of eight percent.
Okay.
So the only thing I can suggest is going through and just trying to figure out.
Where's some?
Where there's places that we really don't.
Well, we're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which number, what department number is that?
Four.
Four. Yep.
If we do pull that paving amount. That would be ninety-five thousand. And increase it and put it out for a vote, separate vote.
Or supplement it with ARPA funds, cause that would.
Yes.
That would, that would basically eliminate the increase.
The paving increase.
Yeah, if, if we, if, yeah, if we used ARPA for paving, that would, cause that's, the total budget's one point six million, so for every seventeen thousand we cut, that's one percent, and so.
So if we apply ninety-five thousand to the ARPA?
Yeah, zero. That's about eight percent.
So we'd be local fund.
Yeah. And we'd still pay it, but just the money could be cut from somewhere else.
And.
And we can only go to that well once, but.
Yeah, that's pretty easy, um, and what would we, an amount of the ARPA funds would we use?
Ninety-five thousand.
Well, I would suggest we use a little more.
Little more?
Yeah. Ninety-five thousand, doesn't get much favor for that.
Nope, we couldn't. Okay. So I'm okay with that, how about everybody else? How's everybody else feel about that?
I get the full balance of the ARPA from Sealy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wide open here for suggestions. I mean, I don't know where else we could possibly go. This is a, a bare bones.
Right, and, you know, the increases are something we don't have control.
Beyond our control, yeah.
Yeah, most of the ones are, and the fire stayed pretty flat too, so. It's hard, cause a lot of these, you know, because you're projecting out, you don't know who's gonna be here in that fiscal year, so it, it could even reduce, you know, a lot of the insurance costs, could reduce labor costs.
That's a good problem to have, but we have to plan for.
Right, but you have to plan higher, cause it could be more.
Yes, I'd rather leave in the black and in the red.
Yep.
So I thought you had discussed even part of that paving money, we took it out of the budget to put in the equipment fund, like forty thousand dollars.
We talked about that too.
Yep.
Cause otherwise, you could level fund this year, it doesn't mean taxes aren't going to go up.
Right.
But next year will be such a. Well, I, I said next year, it will be such a sticker shop to you.
When you lose the ARPA fund, yes.
So the key is to kind of wave out budget, so.
So if you, if we did more than ninety-five into the highway paving fund, and then took the, um, money we have allocated for equipment fund, and took that out of ARPA too?
No, I think what she's saying is use some of the money that we were gonna allocate to highway to fund even, the equipment fund even more.
Like fifty thousand?
So the, the budget will still, the budget won't level fund, it'll go up three percent.
Right.
But it'll make next year, cause none of this is gonna change next year, and it's gonna go up eight percent.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if we don't increase it a little bit, it's gonna really sting next year.
And I don't think you can put ARPA funds into sinking funds, I think you have to use ARPA funds for actual jobs.
Right, which is why.
But we can put it into the paving.
Right, but you said sinking, I don't think you can put it in sinking funds, and I don't think you can use it to pay down.
But if we use the ARPA money to fund the paving, we could move some of the paving money.
Right.
Our own money into the equipment fund.
Right.
Yep.
So you wanna bump the paving up to one-fifty?
Well, then now.
Do a calculator on your desk.
I'd like to see us go, I'd like to see us go zero paving, uh, put fifty thousand possibly up for discussion in the, uh, highway fund, take the ARPA funds and, and whatever we decide on for paving, so.
So take fifty out of paving, highway improvements, and put it into equipment?
Yep, then zero paving.
Yeah, zero paving.
And then we'll, let's just, for sake of having numbers, put a hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds into, use a hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds to pave.
Yep, yep.
So that would be about a three to four percent increase in the bottom line.
Right, that's what we're hoping.
Which is what we always aim for.
Right.
We would still get a lot of paving for our buck.
Hopefully, yeah.
We have a lot of stuff that needs to be replaced, that, that equipment fund money will help.
Yes.
And we won't be looking at an eight or nine, ten percent increase next year.
So what are you, okay, so what are you moving out of highway into the?
Everything out of highway, fifty thousand from highway into equipment, and then fund paving with ARPA money.
Okay, so we're putting fifty into the equipment?
So the equipment will be ninety thousand then?
Yes. Department forty.
So basically, we're putting fifty to equipment and taking all ninety-five out of the paving?
Taking 50 from paving and putting it into equipment. Zeroing paving and then we'll use the ARPA funds to actually do the paving.
Okay, for 150.
Right.
Now, where, where is our sinking fund here for equipment?
It's not, I don't think it's actually a sinking fund.
No, about that.
It's 40, 410, 4010, 40.
4010.
40.
40.
Page four, that's what.
Back to page 10.
Highway equipment fund, yeah, 40.
So it's a reserve fund, it continues on every year.
So that will bump up to 90.
You mean for the total or?
Right.
Oh, so you're adding 50 to the 40 that's already in there?
Yeah, taking 50 out of paving.
Oh, okay.
And put it into the highway fund.
So there's 90 in there.
Yep, and then zeroing paving.
Right, okay.
And using the 150 for ARPA. Because it will just, it, it will give us a little bit of a budget increase so that next year it won't be a 10% increase.
Now who decides how we spend ARPA?
We do.
Just, just the board?
Yeah. That'll still leave us with ARPA, ARPA left.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll probably have another 250, 260, I think it is. I don't think it's, I feel like it's 464 or something, I don't know why that's sticking out.
400 something is what it was.
Yeah, I'll double check.
So is everybody comfortable with that? I think it's as elegant of a solution as we'll come up with.
Plus it's putting money in where we really need it and that's going to cost us down the road. And nothing's getting cheaper, so.
Oh, and then, uh, you know, every community in the United States is going to be in the same position. You know, we're spending ARPA funds and in a few years they're, they're going to be gone and.
Well, that's why the governor's giving us a big spiel about taxes. Because they felt so golden when they gave us all the money and now they want to hold us in check, let us know.
So would it make sense, Judy, for you to make those changes? Next regular meeting, we can have one more clean copy and then we can put it on the agenda for approval?
Yeah, and see what that percentage turns out to be, and yes. Uh, could you get that information to us before?
Oh, yeah, I'll just do it like tomorrow, I'll update it on, then I can see. Albert?
In the last meeting, it said the ARPA fund was earmarked for the lagoons. Was that by a motion or was that just the consensus of the board? I think it was just a.
I think it was consensus.
I believe so.
It, it really boils down to, we're going to get interest-free money to do the lagoons. And so we get more bang for our buck if we do paving.
So for this reallocation, we don't need a motion or anything, we can just go ahead and say it's.
No, and we can do it when we go to approve the budget anyway.
Okay.
Because we stopped to approve the budget, so.
Judy, would you ask, Captain Costin got a loader down there for sale. Could you ask Kyle to just get a price on that?
Sure.
Mr. Hastings? The 11th. Is there anything else the board needs to discuss?
I'm going to stay awake a little bit. Tom?
Yeah.
I can get hurt for it.
What's that?
It's a humber.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to return?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.